Hey, good evening everyone um. I'm sure y'all have received those flyers in the mail already that was sent out last week. Just wanted to remind you voting days on October sixteenth is when you will be receiving your ballots early vote. Go ahead and leave those flyers hang them somewhere so you can remember to uh. Write my name down so you get the spelling right. And uh go ahead and jot the whole thing down Edward Nelson for uh write in underneath Tudor Ogden. So go ahead and leave that hanging on a door stick it on your fridge. So when you get your ballot here uh Tuesday here. You can hurry and go ahead write that number name down there and. Get it returned back so you don't forget it so it's right fresh on your mind and um and it's right there. I'll be excited to get mine when I get it. Uh Tuesday uh that's the first thing I'll be doing. I'll be dropping mine off Friday I've got a lot of things going on Friday I've got um. The radio station wants me to stop in do uh the morning hour uh with them about nine o'clock. There yeah KSVC so I've got that going on. And then I have a couple other things I've gotta do uh that day also. Get wrapped up before the weekend so. So looking forward to November sixth uh voting day. Checking out what the results are and um. Not quite excited to go out on November sixth November seventh. To gather up my uh banners and T post all my materials and stuff that I've used. Um to hang up my banners and stuff because it's gonna be mighty cold out there hopefully I'm not doing it in the snow. Um also appreciate everyone that allowed me to uh put my banners on their property. I appreciate that. Thanks I just can't express how thankful I am to let. Uh me do that and having friends and family that allowed me do it also so. Hopefully I get the vote hopefully I'm in the office uh so we can get some jobs in there you know. Um some industrial um manufacturing jobs some good paying jobs for people to stay in the valley. Uh also finance stuff for uh kids to do around the valley. I hear a lot of people saying there's nothing for kids to do well there is actually quite a bit of things to do. When I was growing up I was outside all the time my brother and I we played Tonka trucks out in the dirt. We were away from that TV we were away from the video games we had in the summertime. We had a lawn mowing business we started that lawn mowing business at the age of six six and seven. And we were mowing lawns and I'll tell you what we were only making five bucks alone. Didn't matter how big it was or how hard it was to mow and how long we had to be there. We would that pull that lawnmower around. On our bicycles so we were always on our bikes all the time. Or we had a wagon hooked up to our bikes and we strapped that wagon uh lawnmower down in that wagon. Uh so we were entrepreneurs and we weren't even we didn't even think of we were entrepreneurs at that age. All we knew is we were out mowing lawns for people for a whole whopping five bucks. In the winter time we were out shoveling snow for people. And it was mostly for the elderly people uh neighbors people in our church or ward. Um and we were doing that for free. If they gave us something for it then they did. We weren't expecting to get paid on that. We were just doing it to help him out because we knew how hard it was on. Shoveling snow especially for the elderly um and the elderly. The 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 women that lost their husbands or something you know we were most we were doing those. Quite a bit we were doing a lot of them because we knew they couldn't do it. Um so we were out there six and seven doing stuff. You know we found things to do even if we were playing out in the dirt we enjoyed it. Brother and I bond real close together we were best friends we are still best friends. Even though we've got our own lives he's got a family I got a family and wife and married and stuff and he's got a job you know. We're still pretty close. Not very many people can say that that's their best friend is. Their brother you know or their sister. Uh partner in crime always there for each other stood up for each other you know no matter where we went. We were together and a lot of it people would say those Milton boys. There's always on their bikes they're always together we heard that all the time. No matter where we went we were always on our bike but you know so so there's a lot of things that. Is there to do it's just getting outside and finding it using your imagination. Um and that's what we did a lot is used our imagination summertime we 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 rode our bikes everywhere. We would go from Monroe from our house we'd ride it over Joe Town Hill over to Joseph. From Joseph over to Elton or the back way right there from Elton or we would go through Central and Austin right there. And then we'd venture on over to Richfield on our bike ride. And that that's all been done in one day and then we turn around and go back through Central. Over to Elton or in on or no we went to went to Richfield and then we went to Annabelle actually is how we did that. And went back roads through Annabelle back to Monroe. On our bikes and that was all done in one day. I'll tell you what we weren't really expecting what we. Had for adventure because it was pretty worn out sore and tired. But I'll tell you what I'd do it again today I enjoyed that it was fun. Just enjoying our conversations you know my brother and I. We didn't go anywhere without each other and we enjoyed that. That's all about life making memories uh but you know. So hopefully I get you guys' vote hopefully I can get him in to be. Uh county commissioner for Sierra County cuz I've got a lot of things that I want to do and I want to push. I have a drive I'm a real hard worker. Uh I work constantly. You know I've had some people tell me on that house that I'm working on in Monroe. Haven't seen you over there for a while you still working on it? Yeah I'm still working on it but I'm not working on it right now. I'm working on the house in Richfield that is ours you know trying to get it so. It can sit for a little while and things that the wife wants me to get done for you know. So she's content with it and you know. And then I can get on over there and get back onto that house so yeah I'm I'm still staying busy. And yeah I am still working on that house. You know so I've got a lot and the neighbors right around in that area it's been watching the place. And has watched from what I've done to it to where it's at now from when I but first bought the place. So that's gotta tell you something you know the wife kinda gives me crap because. I can't sit still I'm always on the go. I've always got something going on I've always got myself into something so. And that's just me I've always been that way. Um I don't know some people say that I've got H HDA uh H HDA D or whatever however you say that crap. A name for something like that I don't care you know it's just that I've got a drive I've got a vision. Got a vision to see something I sit there and ponder on it and go all I can do is something you know. And I make that vision come true so. I'd be great to work for the citizens of Sierra County. Uh if you give me a chance I'll prove to you. Some people tell me I can't do something. And I go out and I'm not just trying to be rude or arrogant. I go out and prove it to them prove them wrong you know and that's just the way I am. Don't sit and tell me I can't do it. Okay because I'll prove you wrong I can do it. Anyone can do anything if they put their mind to it or if they've got the drive or the motivation to go do that. Anyone can go and run for an office it's just doing it taking the first step on doing it. Okay that's what I've done on all my stuff I've take the first step. And I do it it's just like when I started in the rental business. I started out in uh one trailer single wide trailer okay. Yeah I paid a little bit too much for it. Where I bought when I bought it I bought it up at the hot springs there in Monroe. And it needed some definitely serious work. If you ask me I don't think it was really livable because it had a rough leak and stuff and the guy I bought it from. I won't mention his name because it's not even worth mentioning his name it was. He wouldn't let me talk to the tenants by myself without him right there because he told them to keep their mouth shut. Didn't want me knowing what the problems we had in that trailer well I already knew what I had. Because I can see it myself and I knew what I was looking for. Well I'll tell you what today that trailer is ten times better than what it was. Turned around fixed it up. Got the roof leak put some rain gutters on clean the yard up even though it isn't a trailer park. Made it look better for the tenants that were in it turn around and I sold it to them. Because I told them I was gonna put it up for sale and I turned around and sold it to them. So I took that money and I invested it into a piece of property piece of ground dirt. And actually I had that priest property and I ended up selling that because I ended up buying something else and um. I started off just with one little single white trailer now I'm down to five six house other houses. And all I did is started off of a one single wide. Trailer in a trailer park is how I started off in the. Rental business you know people talk trash about Trump. I voted for that guy I'm the one that had that big sign in Richfield Utah. Right behind premium in my front yard. And I was proud to support that guy and I was proud to fly that banner in my front yard. The reason why it went big is because I had some fool come by. And vandalized the first ones spray painted it and cut it up. That's all I was gonna do is have it just the way it was cheap and easy. Well when you mess with my stuff. And I knew that got to you whoever it was. Don't know who it was but one day I'll probably find out who did it. Well guess what you made me mad. And what did I do? I left that banner right up I didn't bother me one bit that was. Vandalized spray painted I seen people drag by pointing at it laugh at it. But I was still gonna keep that thing up because it meant something to me and I was voicing my opinion and my views so I went out. And I made it bigger and better to prove a point. That you mess with my stuff. I'll either go out and make it bigger and better just to get to you a little more. Okay so where I was getting at with Donald Trump or Dale. I didn't start liking that guy just because he started running for president. I've known Donald Trump for quite some time I've heard his names. Kicked around way before I started in the rental business and people said called me oh you're gonna be a Donald Trump Junior huh? I didn't know really what they were talking about did a little research looked him up. And I seen what they were talking about. How he started off in the rental business to starting off in a trailer park gone up to. The rental businesses and now to where he's at now into the biggest in the bigger million dollar. Rental industrial and stuff like that bigger buildings and stuff that is where I got my passion and drive. And uh it's cuz I wanted to be like Donald Trump okay. It's not just because he became the president. You know there's some things that I don't agree with on what he does you know yeah he does need to lay off on that Twitter a little bit but. He's a good old man he does his own decisions and stuff and I'll still support that guy. One day maybe I'll meet him in person. But you know what? I enjoyed that banner in my front yard I don't care how many people sat and called me and told me they were gonna come by and burn it down. Didn't bother me one bit. Cuz my view and my opinion if that hurted you that's your own problem. You got your opinion I got my opinion I don't agree with your opinion we can sit and discuss about him. I'm not gonna sit and hate you I'm not gonna dislike you I'm not gonna sit and threaten to come and burn your house down. Like I did I've got quite a bit of people that told me they were coming to burn it down. And they were gonna burn my house down I can't believe they'd had that in my front yard. So you know. And some people would tell me I've got a lot of balls. To be putting something like that in my front yard to cause all kinds of controversy. And people hating me or whatnot but I'll tell you what. I had a lot of people knock on my doors and they were proud to see that right there. They were proud to see somebody voice in their opinion and not caring who cares about it. Also I'll tell you what I had a lot of people out of town. I was proud to see that sign right there. They wanted to come and take a picture of it and I told them you just go right ahead and take all the pictures you want. And I've had people drop stuff off. To me and said man I'm gonna vote for that guy I like your shine. I don't know how many people stopped by and told me that they just liked that sign. Couldn't tell you how many I enjoyed that sign I'll tell you what after that elections uh down my with this county commissioner. I think I'll be leaving that billboard up and I think I'll be slapping a Donald Trump sign back up on that billboard. Because I hear a lot of people in town that says man I like that billboard I was wondering who did that. A lot of those people know it's me now they didn't know who was living there. But anyways. Got a little off subject. But I just had to tell you that so. October sixteen is coming along. Tuesday so when you get your ballot write my name down right in the right un spot. You want things changed we'll get them changed. You want lower property taxes we're gonna get lower property taxes. We can't keep doing this tax hike. And not having things come in jobs some decent good paying jobs and not just truck driving jobs. Not everyone wants to drive truck that is why a lot of them are going to Salt Lake to find something different than drive truck. Driving truck is not in a bad cuz that's what I do. We need some other things in here manufacturing jobs and industrial jobs. For this valley to grow. And for people to stay here that wants to stay here in this valley we need something to change. I hear a lot of people saying we don't need that crap here. We don't want the riffraff here well tell you what the riffraffs are already it's our very own people. Kids that are just out causing problems because they have nothing else to do or they just don't care. Or they were not taught the right way. Okay so either you bring in the jobs or you don't the raft riffraff is gonna come one way or another. I hear a lot of people say that we don't need that here we don't need that crap in here yeah we do. Then you sit and complain about the tab property taxes raising up. Well we can't have it both ways. You gotta have it one way or another you want lower property taxes you need to bring in the jobs and businesses. If you want higher property taxes then let's just keep all that stuff out because I ain't gonna sit back and just. I'm just not gonna sit back and take it. I don't like paying high property taxes either. And I don't like being away from my family and my kids. To go find work. So. I'm gonna be looking out for my generation and I'm gonna be looking out for my little kids' generation and their generation. And the future's generation we've gotta do something now I've been here for thirty six years in this valley and this is what I call home. Born raised over in Monroe that's God's creation that's God's country right there. Okay I enjoy Monroe I enjoyed it when I was growing up over there not a lot's changed here in thirty six years here in the valley. Walmarts came in Home Depots came in Kmart's gone out but Kmart's kinda been hurting for quite some time. Not a lot of jobs came in I'll tell you what we sure have a lot of homes that. Popped up down the ground there and all the farm ground being sold not a lot of good paying jobs around in the valley. We you know you got Kenworth Peterbilt Freightliner over there in Slyna. But not everyone's qualified to go do that I'm qualified to go through go work over there. It's just knowing who you know basically okay I got my associate's degree in diesel mechanic. You know so not a lot's changed in bringing in businesses and jobs in the thirty six years that I've been there. And I wanna keep my property taxes lower than what it is I don't like paying. Outrageous prices on property taxes for no reason when we should be having jobs in there to keep that down. Businesses in there you know. Having six houses and paying mortgages on those and property taxes on top of those is not cheap. Especially when you got a house it's only nine hundred and seventy five square feet and the property taxes on that and the property is only. Point one zero and it's almost a thousand dollars a year. When I first bought that house it was only five hundred bucks. Somewhere right in that area a thousand bucks or something like that. You know that's that's not right so. If we want something to change write me in vote me into that county office. To be severe county I am willing and I'm driven and I'm a hard worker. And I'm willing to work for every one of us in Sierra County to make a change. To make everyone happy as much as I can. To give us all something to do. So we can be productive and not be on unemployment. I've been on unemployment. Tears you down one thing. Cuz you were going to making some decent money to making pennies. And uh depression sets in and stuff you know you're depressed and stuff like that it's not fun being on unemployment. Now you gotta get out and look for work some things you can't even qualify for let's say food stamps or something like that. You can't qualify for because you got too many assets or you make too much or. And I don't understand how you make too much on unemployment but you don't make enough or. You know or you can't get on unemployment uh food stamps or something like that so you know so we need to get that done. I enjoy. All the other cultures and uh. What's the word the different African American people and stuff I'm not racist I have some real good friends that are. African American or different color you know color than white. And I'll tell you what. They mean a lot to me some of them a lot of them are good friends. And I'd do anything for any of them. So you know this race is crap it needs to stop. Um just like the one ordeal that I was not very happy. About over in um Elton or. Um persons on food stamps and he brags about it all the time and. Buys food and he don't care to work and you know. And some uh folks from out of town out of state I should say they weren't out of town they were out staters. And uh they were from California if I remember right. Come walking on the gas station. And they were African American folks and I said hello to him. This person here paid for his junk food he had in his arms and stuff with his food stamp card. And his buddy sitting out there in the car yelling the N word. Tell you what that pissed me off. You know. I won't sit back and let that happen again. But it was me against three of them. And then I walked in that store and I go oh is that the kind of people we have in this county? We shouldn't need those people around. In this county because all it does is give this county a bad reputation. Because it don't just go from those people it goes to ten people and they go tell ten people and those other ten people go tell twenty people. About our county how racist it is and stuff like that I was not very happy. Because that guy walked down of his uh out of that store with his hands full of his junk food that he bought with his food stamps. Ended up running his mouth and saying it real loud to and I'm sure sure those people heard what they were saying. Do you think they really wanna come back through here or tell anyone about it probably not. When I walked in that store and I told the manager and the lady it was behind the register they were not happy about it. They were just as mad as I was because what they were saying about people it was out of the town. But anyways wasn't gonna make a very long video but obviously we got off a little subject. But as you can see I'm open to my opinions. And I'm not afraid to tell you what tell you my opinion or whatnot. Because everyone's getting their feelings hurt nowadays. And we need to get off of that too. But I'm here to willing to work for every one of us in Spirit County to make severe county better than what it is. And make it great I want it to be known for a great town and county to come to. I want people to come there and spend some time there and enjoy the place. I know there's people up here in the Salt Lake area there that knows where severe county somewhat is because a lot of them go. From Salt Lake down that way to go camping or whatnot they spend a lot of time there at Fish Lake. It's about all they know is Fish Lake. I like to get more people than just going to Fish Lake to go fishing want to get more people. Richfield is pretty much the the city of the hub of the county. Get more people driven to Richfield. Bring him in we gotta figure out somehow. Get that traffic off that highway and have him running through Richfield spending a little time in the valley. Instead of just driving up on that interstate. And say well we we don't know where Richfield is at well I I don't know I might have drove through it I blinked and I missed it. But anyways hope I get your vote on severe county uh commissioner CP. Running against Tudor Ogden write me in. People that do know me. people that do know me just knows how my personality is and I don't put up with crap I stand my ground when I say I'm gonna do something I go do it and I push it and I drive and I drive to get it done it's just the way I work stick to the books and I stick to my rules just like my contracts on my rentals if you can't follow the rules simple rules I get a little pushy and I get a little ignorant about it if you can't follow the rules and do what I simply ask and have respect for the place that's where you get my disrespect but anyways I mean business hopefully to get your vote thanks